Everybody, this is the Wednesday, November 1st, 2023 morning session of the Portland City Council. Kealan, good morning. Please call the roll.
Good morning. Maps?
Here.
Rubio?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here. Now we'll hear from legal counsel on the rules of order and decorum. Good morning.
Welcome to the Portland City Council. To testify before counsel in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the council agenda at portland.gov/council/agenda. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the council clerk's webpage. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. A timer will indicate when your time is done. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony today should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. For testifiers joining virtually, please unmute yourself once the council clerk calls your name. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. First up is Communications, our first individual this morning. Please, item 906.
Request of Michael Axora to address council regarding illegal fireworks. They're joining us online.
Good morning, Michael.
Hey, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yeah, loud and clear.
Great. I'm just here as a follow-up. I came in a few months ago and, if you recall, spoke about this. I don't have any prepared remarks today. I just wanted to really just follow up. I tried to do that online by emailing some of you and haven't heard back. And I don't see that there's been any updates on the website about anything that's being done about this. Again, I appreciate all you guys are doing and not really here to complain as much as see if we can get something done about this. And I'm willing to also volunteer, if that's even something you need or want, to help with the issue. But I don't need all of my time. I just wanted to say that and see if there's been anything done on it.
Thank you, Michael. I know the Portland Police Bureau was listening to your testimony. That was, what, about eight weeks ago, if my recollection is correct. As you know, I led the effort to make the use of fireworks illegal in the city of Portland. And that was both responsive to fires that we'd seen in the community, as well as frankly, the irresponsibility on the part of a few. And just as a reminder, about a month after we passed that fireworks ban, we got a lot of blowback for it, frankly. There was a catastrophic apartment fire on the east side of the river that took lives as a result of people disposing of illegal fireworks incorrectly in a dumpster underneath the apartment building. So this is something that I am concerned about. I can't give you a specific update today. And I'm sorry I wasn't aware of your testimony coming this morning. I would have provided something had I known. So apologies, but I'll have somebody, Megan from our office, maybe Stephanie, reach out to give you more of a specific update.
Thank you.
Next individual, please, 907.
907 and 908 would like to present together for six minutes.
Not a problem.
Okay, 907, request of Connie Schwendeman to address council regarding public easement trees. And 908, request of Richard Peterson to address council regarding public easement trees. They're joining us online.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Morning.
I want to thank the mayor and commissioners for allowing this time for public testimony. My name is Connie Schwendeman. I'm a Portland resident. I'm here to discuss the city's policy of shifting responsibility to the owners of properties adjoining street trees. Less, a little bit less than two years ago, my husband and I gave testimony about our first elm tree that died and the bad experience we had with the city. Our second tree has just been removed and now we're $25,000 in less than two years paying for two trees to be removed. We find this to be an unfair policy. And it's yet another example of the unbundling of services by Portland Parks Department and the Urban Forestry Department. With expert knowledge, the city has been very well aware of the aging canopy of our trees. And the timing couldn't be more perfect for the city to bow out of its responsibility as far as trees go. This is an undue burden on the citizens who own properties adjacent to these trees. And we find that unfair. I would like to suggest some changes. First of all, please don't call the death of a tree a violation. When we received that form, it is like a slap in the face. We did not violate any city ordinance. Our trees simply died. Both of them simply died. Let's see. Oh, also, on the website for Urban Forestry Department, please make it clear, spell it out, that the planting, maintenance, and removal of trees are the public's...
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez had a comment, Connie.
Connie, are you still there?
Yeah, she's...
I am.
Okay. I just wanted to share with you, you know, we just went through this for the second time in four years for Dutch Elm. And it is really an unsatisfactory experience as a homeowner. I've conveyed to Parks just some pieces about how the notices are provided that, you know, we'll continue to follow up on. But it is unbelievably expensive for homeowners. It becomes, it's a total shock. There's not much you can do preventative when you're talking about Dutch Elm. I, you know, I'm not necessarily going to weigh in if this is something that, at this point, that homeowners should continue to fund. But it is very painful. I am there with you. My wife can go on on this subject because she had to deal with the last one. So I, just, all I can say is I understand what you have gone through. It is painful. And I wish we had a better way to address this in the city.
Commissioner, really, there's no incentive to plant a tree in the city of Portland because it's like getting the old maid card. Because it's on you from day one. And it's not just elm trees. It's all trees. So I find this very unfair. And it hasn't always been the city's policy. And I know it's all a matter of money. But I hope that you can find some money to support our homeowners as well.
Yeah, I don't want to overemphasize this point, but literally on our side of the street, 100 years ago, they planted elms. And on the other side of the street, they planted someone else, something else. So every homeowner on our side of the street is, has had to confront this in recent years. And it's, it's just bad luck that we're on the side of the street where they planted Dutch elms or elm trees. So I don't have a solution here. I just wanted to communicate. We, my household is going through the same thing. It is extremely unpleasant.
I know that you are the folks who approve the budgets. And so I am beseeching you that you reconsider the responsibility with the City Parks Department and Urban Forestry Division vis-à-vis street trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan had a comment as well.
Yeah. First of all, thank you so much, Connie. I see that you communicated with the city December 8th, 2020, 21, 2021. And I know that now that you're back and you have more grim news, so we appreciate your follow-up. And the results we want aren't happening with a testimony like this because we want to incentivize residents to actually have street trees, not penalize them for having them. And so your statements are great. I will say that both Jen Cairo and someone else from Urban Forestry is watching right now. And I expect they'll be in touch with you. And we also have to look at some past decisions that were made that gets into the weeds on this one. And one example of that is Urban Forestry used to remove elm street trees infected with Dutch elm disease. A budget realignment several years ago did remove this service to bring elm trees in alignment with other street trees. So it's where maybe policy and practice had a miscommunication. That happens a lot in government. And so my point is, we have to look into this on a deeper level, but also you deserve some customer service. So they'll be in touch with you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Connie. Next individual, please, 909.
Oh, actually, we're going to have, I think, Richard Peterson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I apologize. Jumped the gun there. Yeah, Richard.
Hello. Good morning, and thank you for the time that you allotted us. I haven't got a bunch of notes down. I wanted to kind of put this on a personal level and give you some perspective for our community here in Laurelhurst. We've lived in this house for 50 years. We've tended this tree for 50 years. And within a, with a cost of, looking back at what we had paid at about $20,000 for inoculations and pruning and so forth. So that's an additional burden, and we were happy to pay that with the understanding and that it was your trees, it was the city's street trees, and we wanted to be good citizens. I also know that when we moved in, this was a blue-collar neighborhood. There are many people that have lived in this area for as many years as we have. I'm on a fixed income. And a number of people that are living in Laurelhurst are on fixed income. A particular lady that has a tree in front of her yard. I know for a fact that if she was burdened with this, she could not handle the expense. She would have to sell the house and move. So I just, this hurts on so many levels that I just want you to know that this is a terrible burden on some people. And the trees in general, we have, you know, we had these trees. They were part of the urban canopy that has been touted by the city as one of the things that are a good reason to come live in Portland. This tree generated shade and oxygen for our whole community. And I think the whole community should be involved in the removal or maintenance of those trees. So I guess I don't want to take any more of your time other than just letting you know that this affects the life of the people that are living here very severely. And I know there are people that just absolutely can't handle this. Thank you very much.
Add one more comment. Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yeah, and just for those listening at home, I'm just going to walk you through what a citizen experiences when this happens. You literally get a notice that you have to remove a tree within 30 days. You go out and contract that. When you're talking a 100-year-old elm tree, we got quotes everywhere from eight grand to 30 grand. So you're getting a surprise in the mail that you've got to go solve. You think you've been following the rules because you've been getting your tree inoculated. And that's not a small check for a lot of families. So with really no more warning than 30 days' notice. So it is a deeply unpleasant experience as a citizen that we have had the misfortune of experiencing twice in the last four years, as it sounds like they have. And it is a shift from policy of some years back, understand the budget. So again, I thank you for testifying. And I can only communicate empathy in the sense that I, we have had to go through this twice now. Thanks.
Thank you.
I do think what he brings up, though, is something that policymakers have to keep looking at, which is policies that look at elders aging in place and when they're on fixed income. And I don't think we've put enough clauses in terms of fees and taxes on that segment of our population. Thank you so much for being here.
I have one more point, too, that you kind of touched on. I know that we are paying property tax based on the perceived value of the land, which, at home, which includes those trees. And I wonder if any consideration is being made to reevaluate the tax burden for the trees that are now gone.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Richard, and thank you, Connie, both.
Thank you.
Next individual, please, 909.
Request of Aubrey Russell to address council regarding monuments review process.
Good morning. Is there a timer still? There is a timer, okay.
Aubrey Russell. At council here, July 19th, our staff presented slides, quote, "Phase 1, August 2023 to February 2024." Goal: This phase aims to address the five toppled monuments in question. The next slide explained "February 2024." Share Phase 1 findings and make recommendations about the five monuments in question. That seems pretty clear. At the time, some of us suggested a set timeframe, lack of bias, public testimony. That was then. In September, a few weeks ago, we met with Art Staff and Commissioner Ryan's staff. We were told, quote, "We think that a year from when they accepted the report, July of next year, is when we hope to bring recommendations to council." Darian Jones added this, "In February," quote, "if the feedback we receive is that there needs to be more engagement, then we would still need to continue probably until July." Stephen Herrera said, quote, "This is an emerging process, so nothing is crisp and clear on a very hard and fast timeline," end quote. So the timeframe is not fixed and is shifting, but the timing will decide, be decided by the Monuments Advisory Board, which may forward it to council or may decide on more talks. The Monuments Advisory Support Team, city bureaus like Parks, but also Jess Perlitz and Mac McFarland, may also influence timing since they will make the recommendation to council. This brings me to bias. Jess Perlitz chaired the Lewis and Clark Process, which proposed putting RAC in charge. Mac McFarland organized, with Jess and RAC, the prototypes exhibit in which Washington and Lincoln were shown in flames and degraded with paint, et cetera. And of course, the Parks Bureau has lobbied with RAC against including Lincoln and Roosevelt in the National Register listing of the South Park blocks. I wonder if this is impartial process. Finally, I asked Stephen Herrera about public testimony. He said it would occur at the time of council decision and during communications. Communications. This is not public testimony, robust public testimony. Instead of public testimony, Art Staff wants to organize, quote, "public talks and conversations," end quote. My concern is that when Art Staff decides just who to talk to and in just what numbers, you get orchestrated opinion, not public opinion. Is this going to be Art Staff doing grassroots lobbying? To recap, a set timeframe, lack of bias, public testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Mr. Ross, just one quick question. The reference to images showing the statues in flame, what was that? Could you reiterate what you were referencing there?
So, yes, it was just an art exhibit and included a lot of things, but the perspective was largely about replacing monuments, okay? And I could provide you with text which would support that assertion. And of course, I don't object to any art, but at the time, it was being funded by RAC. At the time, RAC was making a decision about the future of the statues and which, which was a conflict in my view. But people who are deeply, I think, have a history of asserting or advocating for a particular outcome in this process, I think, maybe shouldn't be in central roles making decisions that it would create more trust in the public's mind if more neutral people were put in leadership positions. But also people of, and these are, these are, these are people of certain stature in the arts community, but people who had stature in the more general community. And I'm talking about known figures such as Commissioner Ryan or Barbara Roberts or Margaret Carter, or, you know, you could find lots of people who would be recognized, would be valued, who would signify that this is an important issue, but who also are really accountable to the public and would bring a great deal of sort of gravitas to the whole process. Anyways, that's a little rambling, but the prototypes exhibit was an art exhibit. And I can provide, I can provide you with some materials.
And it was funded by, it was supported by RAC, is that...
It was co-organized by RAC. It was in part funded by RAC. And it was organized by people who have been involved in the Lewis and Clark Process and apparently are going to continue to be involved in the process moving forward.
Okay. And, you know, this gets to the heart of a difficult issue, right? The free expression of art is one thing, and if someone wants to depict our statues in flames and they consider that art, that's their prerogative. But I think what you're getting at is what perspective they apply as advisors or guiding decisions about statues and other monuments in the community, that one is entitled to their expression, but that that calls into question their objectivity. Is that a fair summary?
That's a, that's a much better summary than my own.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan.
Well, actually, your summaries are both just fine. Thanks for being here, Aubrey. I know that my chief of staff and you had a conversation yesterday, Kelly Torres. And I'm glad you're here. We made decisions in July, and you saw the timeline. And we're doing all we can to, I got similar information, and so we're getting it back on track. And we will have some decisions for sure by February about the fate of those. And we will include in the art talks that are very objective out in the community, some roundtables for people to be engaged in specifically on this topic as well. So we are a little bit behind the eight ball in getting out there and engaging, and so we just need to do it. And when you convene and you steward convening in the, in the public realm on something that's deemed controversial, you're right, you have to have objectivity so that all parties feel safe and heard at the table, all parties. And so that's the goal, and that's always been my goal when I do stewardship and convening. And so that's the goal, and that's always been my goal when I do stewardship and convening. So thank you for being here and keeping us on task. I appreciate it.
Can I ask you a question? Does, does this come back to council for a final decision, or is there going to be a recommendation made to council? I'm, I'm just curious about what, what the end game is.
That's what I would expect. When I was handed this, Commissioner Rubio, if you'd like, it was started with a process with Lewis and Clark to kind of gauge what the landscape should be like as we move forward. We decoupled the five toppleds from what the process should look like going forward. This is a conversation nationally. There's national foundations that are tuned into this, and Portland wants to get it right. But it doesn't mean perfection has to get in the way of good, that it takes another three years. But we have to, we have to, we did decouple them, and that's why the timeline we announced in July said February we'd have decisions. And we're certain that we could have at least three of the five decided by then, I'm being told. And they are expediting the process to get engagement going, where they're actually talking and reaching out to the community. And there has been a lot of planning, as you know, that's gone on, and now it's time to put it into action. Not that planning isn't action, but I just want to say that it helps when people are paying attention and keeping us honest.
Could you clarify who the decision maker is?
We are the ultimate decision makers, Commissioner.
So it'll be council?
Yeah, it's coming back.
Sorry, for the record, my question was just clarifying who, who makes the ultimate decision here. It sounds like council will make the ultimate decision.
And we received a report in July that had the timeline that we all approved of. So that was the public transparency moment that we have to get back on track.
Great. Well, we all have something to look forward to this summer. Thank you.
Actually, this winter.
This winter?
Yeah.
Good. Thanks, Aubrey. I know you'll be back. Next individual, please, nine ten.
Request of Jude Brewer to address council regarding Regional Arts and Culture Council Contract Renewal for 2024. Jude is joining us online.
Good morning, Jude.
Good morning. Thanks for having me this morning, council. I just wanted to address the discontinuation of the contract with RAC. I'm gonna read a statement here. "There was a time in Commissioner Dan Ryan's life when he fell gravely ill and he returned to the city of Portland, unsure of how much longer he would live. And in 2019, I lost two people who were very important to me. The following year, I lost my father. Within that year was when I received my RAC grant. Getting that grant meant everything, because I had moved to Portland in 2012 with a single dream to work with writers, musicians, actors, and artists from all disciplines. I was not familiar with Portland at the time. I've now lived here 11 years. I've worked with hundreds of Portland artists through my shows Storytellers Telling Stories, Storybound, and now The Process. These shows are my way of giving back to the community that has saved my life. But when I moved here, I didn't know if the city did believe in me, if the city would support these dreams. And when it came to applying for the RAC grant, people like Grants Officer Ingrid Carlson were instrumental in helping me understand even how to write a grant. I submitted all the materials, and she was able to take a phone call with me and offer me a chance to revise all of it before I submitted officially for grant approval. I was a young, struggling artist with no experience with grant writing, almost no money to my name. And so not only was I approved for a grant, but I was educated in the process of applying for grants in general, which has helped me to this day. So I want to share a statement from artist Brianna Barrett, my fellow RAC grant recipient from that year. Brianna says, "The RAC grant has enabled the Oregonian artist to pursue a wide range of creative projects over the years, which serves to enrich our community, inspire others, and create opportunities for growth among our creative professionals. As an early-career writer, I benefited tremendously from joining Limestone Playwrights, a theater collective that received RAC grants in the past for play readings we mounted at Artist Repertory Theater. The experience not only gave me an opportunity to develop my writing and find a creative home in Portland, but also directly led me to dedicate years of independent research to writing a full-length play based on Francis Fuller Victor, a 19th-century author who is said to be the first historian of Oregon. I was honored to receive a RAC grant a few years later to record a radio presentation of this story during the pandemic in partnership with the Storybound Podcast. This experience instilled in me a passion for uncovering stories about the contributions of women in history, particularly Oregonian history, and continues to connect me to audiences and theater makers who are passionate about the same. So, council, in closing, I would like to make this statement directly to Commissioner Dan Ryan. Mr. Ryan, you are not new to Portland, and you should know that RAC, what RAC means for our community." Thank you, that's my time.
You, you have 30 seconds, if you wanted to finish.
Oh, appreciate it. You have a Bachelor of Arts degree. You've been touched by illness and death in your life, so you know the role that art plays in one's life during these struggles, and how vital it is to have experienced individuals to help artists. Individuals who've known our community personally and have worked to educate us beyond just the one simple grant. So I'm asking you to please reconsider your decision to discontinue the city's contract with RAC and instead seek some sort of negotiation, some sort of middle ground, if not to outright renew the same contract.
Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for that beautiful testimony, Jude. I appreciate it. And you're right, I, I am from here, and theater basically saved my life. Fortunately, I did get sick, and I had to get out of the theater world and find a, and get a doctor. So I, I have a lived experience that I appreciate that you know a little bit about. The decision, just so that you really know, to set the record straight, RAC is an organization that continues to exist. They're going through their own stuff. We are committed to not missing a beat in terms of getting investments out to artists and out to arts organizations. We made, we made a decision collectively to not continue RAC as the sole contractor. That's all. They are open, and, and we are welcoming them to apply for the contracts. But what I want you to hear, because there's been misinformation, is that the investments going out to people like yourself to apply, and you're part of that arts ecosystem, are welcomed and wanted. So I hope that you will monitor the progress on the website. I know that we'll give updates out to the arts community, and we do have some arts talks coming up, two next week and one the following week, out in the community. You can see it on our website, where we can go deeper into this dialogue. Thank you for being here, Jude, and please know that the arts ecosystem is, is a big part of the focus of this council. Thanks.
Thank, thank you. I appreciate it. And I just wanted to make it clear that I, I make it clear that I think RAC and their individual commitment to it and their specific knowledge and expertise, I, I just hope that will, you know, continue to be respected and acknowledged.
Jude, I, I just want to say this also. You know, as Commissioner Ryan hinted at, this was not his decision alone. And I've, I've watched people come at Dan as though this was something he pulled out of a hat. He didn't. I supported his decision. I supported the reasons behind that decision. And to be honest, I think actions that have happened at RAC since we made that decision have done nothing but underscore and validate that decision. We have a responsibility to not only protect art infrastructure and the ecosystem in our community, we have a responsibility to protect taxpayer funds and make sure that they are being invested wisely. And we are ultimately on the hook for how those funds are deployed. And I will just tell you personally, I made numerous suggestions to RAC over the years, all of which were summarily dismissed or ignored. And so as the contractor with RAC, I'll just tell you, I was not satisfied. And so I, I, I don't want Dan to take the heat alone here. I 100% supported that decision, just so you know. Does that complete communications?
It does.
Great, thank you. Next, we'll do the consent agenda. Have any items been pulled off consent?
No items have been pulled.
Please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Maps.
Aye.
Reveal.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Consent agenda is adopted. Next item, please, time certain, number nine one one.
Authorize solicitation and execute multiple contracts required to implement advanced metering infrastructure and a new customer engagement portal for city utility accounts for amount not to exceed $76 million.
Commissioner Maps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, this item comes to us from the Water Bureau and the Bureau of Environmental Services. This ordinance authorizes those bureaus to solicit and execute three contracts that will ultimately enable the city's utility bureaus to use wireless technology to read your water meters. Currently, our utility bureaus read about 190,000 water meters manually four times a year. This work is cumbersome, and this work is expensive. In addition, our media, metering infrastructure is aging, and many meters in our system need to be replaced. That's why the Water Bureau and Environmental Services are in the process of modernizing our metering system. Under our next metering system, water usage will be tracked electronically every day. Water Bureau customers will be able to track their water usage in roughly real time through an app on their phone, which will enable our customers to catch expensive leaks early. In addition, this new metering system will allow our customers to access data they can use to manage utility costs. Finally, this project, as part of this project, the city's utility bureaus will consolidate our online customer services into a new, accessible, multilingual, online, and mobile customer engagement portal. Here to tell us more about this ordinance, we have Queisha Light, Customer Service Director for the Portland Water Bureau, and we have Farshad Aladadi, Business Services Group Manager for Environmental Services. Welcome, Queisha and Farshad. Please take it away.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. As Commissioner Maps noted, I'm Queisha Light, and I'm, I'm the Customer Service Director for the Portland Water Bureau, and I'm very excited to be sitting here with my partner, BES, Farshad. Portland's utility bureaus have partnered together to revolutionize how we collect customer usage data and deliver equitable, accessible customer service. This initiative will replace or upgrade manual water meters with digital meters and streamline data collection. It also merges four separate online customer service systems into a single new multilingual online and mobile engagement portal. With this new system, we and our customers will be able to quickly identify leaks while also empowering our customers with real-time data to manage their utility costs. This ordinance authorizes the procurement of goods and services required for this groundbreaking transformation. As the Commissioner noted, currently, we manually read nearly 190,000 meters every three months, leading to undetected leaks, water loss, high bills, and lost revenue. Manual quarterly reads hinder our ability to shift to monthly billing and make it impossible for us to provide usage data that can help our customers manage their costs. The Portland Water Bureau's 2020-2024 Strategic Plan rightfully included exploring Advanced Metering Infrastructure, or AMI, as a key step towards addressing these issues. In 2020, we completed a feasibility study on automated meter reading technologies and made a compelling case for AMI. In 2023, both utility bureaus secured funding and support for AMI, paving the way for project implementation. We respectfully request council to authorize three solicitations and contract awards to implement AMI and a new customer engagement portal at an estimated total cost of $76 million. Project costs will be evenly shared between the Water Bureau and the Bureau of Environmental Services, totaling approximately $91 million over the next seven years. This project transforms how customers use, how customer usage data is collected, it enhances transparency, it broadens services through online customer service. And upon completion, our customers will have access to that single porter, portal, excuse me, that Commissioner Maps mentioned. They'll be able to monitor their consumption, pay their bills, make service requests, get alerts, rebate, get rebates, and enroll in programs. These services will be available on various devices and in multiple languages. This project has and will continue to seek direct input from customers and focused communities during system design and implementation. This system-wide, this system-wide effort will benefit every one of our 190,000 customers and touch every one of the 190,000 meters in the field. So another way for you to think about this is at the account level. $400 per account buys 20-plus years of accurate meter reading, customer access to daily usage, and accessible multilingual online self-service portal that offers the kind of service our customers are used to receiving from PGE and other utilities, and it will finally allow us to move to more affordable monthly billing. Project costs are included in the capital investment plans for both of our bureaus and already factored into rate forecasts. We request that you support this transformation of Portland's utility services to create a more equitable and efficient future for our customers and approve our request to authorize three solicitations and contract awards to implement AMI and a new customer engagement portal at an estimated total cost of $76 million. And I'll turn it over to Farshad.
Thank you, Commissioners. The only thing I would like to add to this is a couple of comments about the partnership between the two bureaus. As the billing agent and principal customer service and account management provider for Portland's water, stormwater, and sewer utility customers, the Water Bureau is leading this initiative. However, the Water Bureau and the Bureau of Environmental Services are partners in every other sense of the word. Project governance is shared, a shared responsibility of both bureaus. Queisha and I lead the project steering committee, and both bureaus have key subject matter experts managing the technical and policy issues associated with this work. As Queisha also mentioned, both bureaus are sharing the financial responsibility of AMI. BES has included AMI in its cap, the expected capital costs in our CIP program, or CIP, pardon. And overall, we feel AMI is a program that is an excellent example of inter-bureau collaboration and partnership, consistent with the objectives of the service area, public work service area, and will ultimately improve service levels and value to our shared customers. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think we might have some, if there are no questions, I think there might be some public testimony on this one. Keela.
Sorry. We do have one person signed up, Walter Wyler. Is Walter Wyler here? That's it.
All right. Very good. Any further discussion? Thanks for the presentation. This is the first reading of an on-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you. Well done. Thanks for your hard work. Next item, nine one two, and that's time certain as well, a report.
Accept the Portland Parks and Recreation Board 2022 to 2023 Annual Report.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board was established by council in 2001 to ensure that park system delivers on its mission to provide healthy parks and natural areas, urban forest management, recreation services, programming for all ages, all demographic groups, all abilities, as such facilities are accessible to all Portlanders. I want to thank our Parks Board members for their time and passion for parks and recreation and for their continued engagement. And now I'd like to introduce our Parks Board Co-Chairs. Thanks for coming up to the table. And I must pause to mention, we have two very passionate, committed, and skilled leaders who are using a lot of their so-called free time to give to the city and to their passion for Portland parks and recreation. And they're leaning our board at a very important time in the city's history, a history that has consistently placed our parks in the national elite standing with practices that do lead the nation. So welcome, Dr. CNE Corbin, good to see you, and her co-chair, Elena Purlon, wait, Elena Pertolginny. Is that it? I always do your name wrong.
Ilana Pertolginny. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Pertolginny, to share their annual report. And it was really good to see you at the, at the Urban Forestry Arbor Day celebration in, in the park recently. So anyway, thank you both for being here. I had a chance to listen to a brief of your presentation last week, and now I'm like, excited to know that my colleagues were here the same. Thanks for being here. The floor's yours.
Thank you for having us. This year, the Portland Parks and Recreation Bureau has moved into a new phase after completing the 22 vision work, and the board's role is also involving Guided by Healthy Parks, Healthy Portland Report. This initiative centers minoritized, marginalized, and underserved communities while being responsive and transparent, allowing for Portland Parks and Recreation to share decision-making and promote civic engagement. Healthy Parks, Healthy Portland comes with an admirable mission to provide equitable access to welcoming places, programs, and services that improve community health and our environment, and envisions a park and recreation system that is responsive to diverse and changing community needs, nurturing health, and connection for all. The board aims to uphold the mission, vision, and values of Healthy Parks, Healthy Portland with on our advisory role to Portland Parks and Recreation and the city council, and in our work as the public forum for public discussion and decision-making. The board's work is driven by the values of equity, inclusion, and accessibility in delivering parks and recreation services, and the necessity of extending those services to all Portlanders, especially those who are underserved. The board believes that this, to be a great city, Portland must have great parks, open spaces, natural areas, and recreation opportunities that are safe, well-maintained, actively distributed, and accessible to all. In accordance with Healthy Parks and Portland, the Portland Parks and Recreation Advisory Board's 2023-2024 parties are as follows, leading with belonging, justice, equity, diversity, and- Diversity, and Inclusion; Increasing Public Engagement with the Board; We do have public comments at the beginning, at the end of our meetings, and we invite Portlanders in to work with us; and Advocacy. It is our commitment to the city of Portland, Portland Parks and Recreation, and the Portland community that we uphold and operationalize belonging, justice, equity, diversity, including inclusion within our advisory capacity, within our work as a board, and in our board meetings. These tenants extend to who we serve and represent, and include future colleagues and leadership on the board. We will continue dismantling and reducing barriers to access and participating in our meetings while creating inclusive and equitable pathways to serve as board members regardless of social, economic status. We believe that leading with belonging, justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion will increase public engagement with the board, as we also work to meet community and residents where they are by volunteering at Portland Parks and Recreation events and doing the deep hanging out necessary to serve our city and represent its residents. The board will advocate for equitable and sustainable 21st century park, urban park and recreation system as permitted by the city code and our bylaws to ensure that Portland Parks and Recreation legacy for future generations. Do you want to jump in?
Sure. So based on the, the work that the board has done over the last year, we wanted to highlight a few pieces for you all, which you'll also see in the report. We'd like to put them on the record today, though, as well. Between 2022 and 2023, the board has participated in a number of civic and community committees on behalf of Portland Parks and Rec and also on behalf of the community within Portland Parks and Recreation. We have been part of the Healthy Parks, Healthy Portland analysis. We have worked on a mission, vision, values, and racial equity team for Portland Parks and Recreation. We've been part of a variety of park renaming committees. We've worked on Title 20 amendments on the Parks Levy Advisory Committee, the Parks Replacement Bond Oversight Committee, work to create the DRCEL 15 Revised O'Brien Square work that is occurring, the RFI selection and review process for that new park, budget advisory committees, and public advisory committees to create new parks. The board has had informational presentations and reports on a variety of different topics. You have the full list in your report from us, but just to highlight a few, we have had numerous discussions about the shelter activation process, which we know are discussions happening elsewhere within the city. We have had a number of conversations about financial assistance and the pilot work that's happening within Portland Parks and Rec there. We have talked about Portland Parks and Rec's work within the OMSI master plan and other areas of development around Portland, and we continue to be a part of the Healthy Parks, Healthy Portland conversations and advise Portland Parks and Recreation on how that work is moving forward. Toward the end of the report, you'll see two important sections where we talk about areas of concern that we have moving forward, and I want to draw your attention to that because we very intentionally divided that part of the report into two sections. The first is areas of concern for parks, places where we want you to know more work needs to be done within our parks system, our Parks and Recreation system, to be able to better serve Portlanders. You'll see things there like the need to have more wireless internet capacity within meeting spaces so that those can be more useful, more accessible to Oregonians who need those low-cost meeting and gathering spaces. You'll see information about implementation of the ADA plan and universal park design work, and a few other recommendations. The section after that, though, is a section about systemic issues that are causing areas of concern for us as we look at the future of Portland Parks and Recreation. Those are larger issues where we need your help to be able to solve those problems. Those are things like the citywide approach to climate resilience and Portland Parks and Recreation's role within that work. Those are things like our ever-growing deferred maintenance backlog, which I know Commissioner Ryan has heard a lot about, I know the rest of you have heard us talk about that as well, where we really need the city to take a holistic look at how we are addressing maintenance backlog within our parks. That's a cost that is growing and that will continue to grow over time. Systems are easier to repair than replace, and our community members see these, this backlog of maintenance that's needed within the community. So I hope you take a look at those two sections, specifically that second section.
You want to close us out? Yes. We ask that you continue to partnership through fully funding our parks system, partnering with parks to continue to provide more access to our parks, recreation, and programming, and supporting the Portland Parks and Recreation Bureau's crucial and increasing role as the city's ecosystem of vital infrastructure, which serves at the forefront of mitigating climate change and severe weather as a highly recognized urban park system. And lastly, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board supports Commissioner Ryan's proposal to add the citywide operational natural area and tree management unit to the Parks and Recreation Service area. This will establish the importance of green infrastructure, ecosystem services, urban ecology, again, as a vital and integral to community and environmental sustainability and livability as the city of Portland contends with severe weather events due to climate change, and we look forward to seeing you this afternoon during the council meeting. Thank you.
I know I was able to hand out the reports to some of you. We don't have any on us today, right? Okay. I think, Mingus, I need to get you one, but I was fortunate to meet with most of you yesterday and hand out the report. That's, that concludes our report. It's open to all of you for questions.
Great. Colleagues, any questions at this point? Public testimony?
We have two people signed up.
Three minutes each. Name for the record, please.
First up is Mia Winters-Cummins. Is Mia here? Followed by Jared Essig.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler, distinguished commissioners, citizens of Portland, and Parks and Recreation representatives. Thank you for your report. I read the summary on the city council website. My name is Jared Essig. I am representing the public and the Rose City Iron Front, and I commend the areas of concern that are addressed by the Parks and Recreation Representatives of Safety and Sanitation. These are, in my opinion, the most, the two most important issues that need to be addressed. The maintenance backlog will be something that, that's your mess, and you'll have to figure that out, but there are two other areas of concern that are not listed here, which I, I want to put on the agenda. Number one, camping, camping in the parks. Number two, monuments in the parks. I just had a good discussion with Mr. Russell about his communication to the council earlier, and I will have more to say about this, both here and at RAC before February, because these issues are all intersectionally related. So you're going to be hearing more from me in the coming months about how to increase public safety in the city as a whole, and how to bring down crime rates to where they were in 2019, which is possible if the city has an adequate and coherent strategy. Hiring more police is not a substitute for a strategy. Now, public safety and public camping are often issues that are addressed together. I'm going to address that more fully at another communication. But sanitation is the one that you can address immediately. I think that's something everyone agrees on. You need healthy bathrooms that are open year-round. There's no, really no, no disagreement on that. This doesn't really require any discussion. Now, right here in the, in the Portland Civic Plaza, you have two bathrooms that are closed most of the year, and that is something that can be addressed right away. You need to find the budget for that and, and use the money for that purpose, and if you don't have the money, then you need to stop spending it on your lawyers who are refusing to represent the city and win lawsuits, and, and you need to spend it on something else, like opening public bathrooms. As for monuments... Okay, I'll address that in another communication. I have 30 seconds left. Public safety and camping. The city of Tualatin had an innovative solution on how to deal with that issue. I recommend you learn something from them. Monuments need to teach history, not just idolize our leaders. Statues are not history, and the American Historical Association agrees. You'll hear more from me on this in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That completes testimony.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Commissioner Maps moves. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Rubio, seconds. Any further discussion on the report? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Maps.
I want to thank our guests for today's testimony and for this report. I also appreciate the public testimony we heard today. I vote aye.
Rubio.
I want to thank Mr. Ryan for his leadership and stewardship of parks, and also for our guests who gave a great overview of all the great work that's happening, and I especially want to commend the board as they continue to lead and support the work by centering the values that they talked about, equity, inclusion, accessibility, et cetera. I've seen firsthand the importance of ensuring accessibility in underserved communities and how much it means when a community, as a community, we think holistically about parks and in, by especially considering the social determinants of health, climate, and sustainability, and also equity, inclusion, and racial justice. So thank you for this incredible work and for so clearly centering community in this work as well. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, first of all, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Corbin and Ilana. That was a great presentation, and I want to thank both of you for your leadership. You, you have a very engaged, passionate board. You're citing a culture that's really helpful for the city, and you also advocate so elegantly with both the importance of the play part of parks and the restorative nature part of, that's necessary for the cell called Portland to continue to have clean air and have environmental restorative justice. So I really like that you, you hold all of that, and it's very necessary that we do that, but we live in a world of, often in the or, and I really, really appreciate that you lean into the and, and are bringing communities together with that, with that type of guidance. So I appreciate you, I see you, and we look forward to working with you as we move forward. I accept the report.
Gonzalez.
Sorry for the back and forth. I'm doing childcare in real time, so with closed schools, but I want to thank the presenters, all the staffs at Parks, the Parks Board, and all those who contributed to this report. While all bureaus face varying degrees of challenges right now, I'm happy to support Portland Parks and their efforts to continue delivering some of the best urban green spaces in the nation. Our city faces many challenges, but is built with good bones. I believe our parks will be a valuable assets, asset in reactivating our downtown and reconnecting our neighborhoods. Parks has been a good partner when we experience severe weather, opening up community center space to PBM for warming and cooling shelters, taking care of our most vulnerable residents. I'm pleased to hear about the new work group and the programs they plan to deliver, excluding expanded swim lessons. I know the to-do list for Parks is long and may seem challenging, but I have faith in staff under Commissioner Ryan's leadership, happy to accept this report and support Parks however I can in the future. Thank you.
Wyler.
I can't really top that. I mean, that's, that's the full statement, and I appreciate it, and I, I just want to say what he said, but maybe I'll add one more thing, which is this is going to be a challenging time for parks going forward because the parks depend heavily on public support through our levy, and right now, the public is not in the mood to support any government at any level going to the ballot. And so I will put out my first request to the people of this community. I know you love the parks. You've just heard a report that demonstrates that the commissioner in charge, that the leadership in the Parks Bureau are deeply committed not only to maintaining the assets that we have, but also adding to, I'm going to use a great pun here, the pool of new programs that we have here. No collective groan yet from the audience, swim lessons pool, never mind. But the important point here is this, we need the public to support the parks, and we have to go forward with a levy to at least maintain the current service level at some point in the not distant future. And obviously, polling will direct that, public sentiment will direct that, but I just really want to put that reminder out there that this great, great park system that's been in place for so many decades is wholly dependent upon financial support from the public. With that, happy to join my colleagues in voting aye. Thanks, Commissioner Ryan, for great leadership. Director Long, thank you for your team as well. I, the report's accepted. And as Commissioner Fritz used to say now for something completely different, item 920, please, on the regular agenda, this is an emergency ordinance.
Ratify a collective bargaining agreement with Portland Firefighters Association relating to the terms and conditions of employment of represented employees in the Community Health Unit of Portland Fire and Rescue for 2023 through 2026.
Colleagues, the, this collective bargain agreement with Portland Firefighters Association Local 43 represents the community health medical responders, as well as the nurses, establishing wages and other terms and conditions of employment. The CBA provides a premium for emergency vehicle operations certification, standby pay for nurses to triage calls after hours, establishes holiday pay, and a 3% premium for responders with a current paramedic certification. We have Labor Relations Coordinator Kim Fautes, as well as Portland Fire and Rescue Division Chief Stephanie Sullivan here today to take us through the finer details of the ordinance. But before I do that, I want to ask the commissioner in charge if he has any comments he'd like to make. Commissioner?
Sure, thank you so much. Well, I'm pleased to discuss this contract for a very important city program. This is for CHAT. This stands for Community Health Assess and Treat in Portland Fire and Rescue. It addresses the health and social needs of people who can call 911 for non-emergency issues. So let me be very specific. We have a low-acutey medical challenge in our community. It's a substantial amount of our medical calls that flow through both emergency and non-emergency. CHAT helps address those in many, many cases without the need of an AMR ambulance or a four-person fire rig for a lot of those medicals. EMTs respond to these low-acute calls and provide follow-up care within 24 hours. It's important because the program sends the right responders to the call and keeps fire police, AMR, and ED staff available for critical calls. They do so while responding to patients with trauma-informed care and providing wraparound We'll get into some of the other important programs that are addressing right now when Fire Chief Stephanie Sullivan speaks, but I'll turn it over to you all. Thank you, Mayor.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for having us. This is an initial collective bargaining agreement that we have for this group. This is the first civilian contract that Portland Firefighters Association Local 43 has negotiated. It was a very interesting back and forth, and I want to thank Portland Firefighter Association's bargaining team. They were very collaborative. We use a traditional bargaining style, however, we discussed interests at the same time, which is similar to the interest-based bargaining that we did with the successor agreement, and we found that by doing that, we were able to reach an agreement in about six months. So we're very pleased to be bringing this forward. It's also very, a small cost addition, and because these programs are primarily grant-funded, a little bit of it is coming out of the general fund, but most of it is coming from grants. This is, as you, both Mayor Wyler and Commissioner Gonzalez mentioned, these are very important programs that are helping to relieve, relieve the emergency departments and other such calls and our AMR folks, and we are also looking to try to get towards a 24/7/365 model, so we were considering that as part of these negotiations. And to that effect, we did provide some holiday pay that is very similar to our civilian contracts, and, well, it's consistent with the civilian contracts and our Human Resources Administrative rules that provide the same holiday pay for everybody else. I also want to thank our, my management bargaining team, including Deputy Chief Stephanie Sullivan, who came in late into this process. We also had manager Lila Layton and the nurse supervisor Michelle Lovina, who also worked very hard and collaboratively to get to this resolution. And that's everything from me. Do you have any questions?
Very good. Colleagues, any further questions on this item? Keela, do we have public testimony? Very good. Colleagues, any further questions on this item? Kealan, do we have public testimony?
We do. We have one person signed up. Isaac McLennan.
Good morning, Isaac.
Good morning. Just getting signed in here. Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Portland City Commissioners. My name is Isaac McLennan. I'm the president for the Portland Firefight Association. A firefighter here for 21 years and a resident of the Roseway neighborhood. I want to speak to you about a couple of things. First of all, as you know, this journey on the community health side started mid-year 2021. Later that year, around November, we entered into a letter of agreement with the city of Portland to expedite this good work that the workers were doing or were going to do, be on the front line of issues that our city's facing right in the streets. Not only in Portland Street Response, but in the Community Health Assess and Treat, and really connecting with the community in multiple ways, right wherever they are. And again, this is the most vulnerable people in our population that these folks go and help, much like firefighters and police, but in their own way, in a very needed way. And so collaboratively, like Ms. Kim Faust said, collaboratively, we worked together to give these workers what they need, which is a good solid contract. And I think in good faith, we met at the table and bargained in good faith. And I think we came to an agreement that will work for everyone. And we did so without the costly need for arbitration. And I think that really speaks loudly, especially considering what you hear going on around the city, around the state, around the country. So again, only four months later, we have another agreement that we've we've come to the table and met in good faith. And I rise to say thank you to everyone on the negotiating team from the city. I'd like to also thank all the team that work for Portland Firefight Association, putting in the long hours to make sure that these workers have the right representation and the right contract moving forward. So I appreciate your time. Thanks for letting me reach in virtually. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your support going forward.
Thank you, Isaac.
One more comment.
Please, go for it.
Chief Sullivan, wanted to just, could you just highlight briefly the Buprenorphine pilot that CHAT's involved in? I think it's an important program for those who are concerned about the fentanyl crisis we're facing on the streets of Portland.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity. We will be starting this 18-month pilot with the county. It's a Buprenorphine pilot. And it's an opportunity for us to engage in people with people who have a meeting right after they've received Narcan in the streets and give them medication that's going to assist them getting into some treatment. So when they're in withdrawal, we're going to give them medication that's going to help them to get off of drugs. So this is a very innovative pilot program. People from across the country will be looking at this and seeing how successful we are and watching how they can use that in their own cities. So it's going to be a really great program. One of the one of the perks to it is that we have the CHAT program who will be giving this drug, and we have Portland Street Response and the CHAT Aftercare teams who are going to be following up and helping them to provide these wraparound services and connecting them with treatment facilities, getting them enrolled in Medicaid, CARE-ORG, and whatnot. So it's a really great program for us.
I just want to emphasize that, you know, I think the union was a great partner here, given the uncertainty in long-term funding for this program. It is supported by CARE-ORG. I think everybody came in as grown-ups to get this deal done without asking for the moon. There is a little bit of premium pay during the BUP, which is the shorthand for this, for paramedics that can qualify. This has to be administered by a paramedic. So we need to continue to attract and retain paramedics for that function. But this was not a rich contract in other respects. It's fair, but also recognizing the realities we're facing in stable funding for this program.
Thank you. And that completed public testimony. Kealan?
It does.
So this is an emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Maps.
I want to thank staff for today's presentation. I also want to congratulate and really recognize Commissioner Gonzalez's leadership in helping land this contract. Really excited about the work being done in this particular program, which is why I am glad to vote aye on this initial contract.
Rubio.
I want to thank the bargaining team and also Commissioner Gonzalez for his leadership here. I also know that bargaining these contracts can be a challenge, but I want to thank all the members who participated in this conversation for their dedication to a fair outcome for all involved, and especially Chief Gillespie, Kim, and all the members of Local 43. I also want to take a moment to thank the community health medical responders and health nurses who are on the ground providing such incredible, important services and community support. So thank you for all you do for the community. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. Thanks for being here this morning and your bargaining team. Good work. Commissioner Gonzalez, I appreciate your leadership. I remember the meeting we had with Eric Hunter and how important that was to maintain that relationship with CARE-ORG as we go forward. I'm glad people will be watching. This is messy. It's hard. And we're going to make mistakes, and that makes us stronger, and we'll learn from them and keep moving forward. So I'm proud to support this. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
I want to reiterate my appreciation for both Commissioner Ryan, Tom Miller, and my team, and CARE-ORG for continuing to fund and support this program. Great job, negotiation team, and Chief Sullivan on this, getting this to the end. And our labor partners, again, were very helpful in promptly resolving this contract in an effective way, and still good stewardship for the city of Portland. So this is a win-win-win as far as I'm concerned. I happily vote aye.
Wheeler.
I am very happy to support the commissioner in charge, Renee Gonzalez, as well as his hard-working staff. Chief, thank you for your leadership. Labor Relations did a great job. And Isaac, I'm not going to leave you out of the equation here either. Your folks are doing the work. And let's be honest. The work that we are asking first responders to do now is not as glamorous as it was, say, 10 years ago. It's really hard work. And all of us here have done ride-alongs in various capacities with first responders, and we see the constant, constant pressure that they are under, dealing with the wave of drugs that is sweeping across our streets with vulnerable populations who find themselves on our streets with a lack of resources upstream, whether it's behavioral health, mental health, substance use disorder treatment. All of that now falls at the feet of our first responders. And as I looked at this contract, Commissioner Gonzalez, I thought it was very reasonable. And you use the word adult conversation. In this day and age, that's obviously something that we all appreciate. It could have been very divisive, and it wasn't. I feel like this process worked really well. Everybody stayed at the table. As Commissioner Ryan indicated, the CARE-ORG folks were there every step of the way. This was just really well done. And therefore, there's no drama involved, and everybody gets what they want. So I'm really happy to vote aye. And the contract is approved, and the ordinance is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, item 921.
Pay settlement of Michael Weisdorf bodily injury lawsuit for $300,000 involving the Portland Police Bureau.
Colleagues, this ordinance resolves a lawsuit brought against the city back in August of 2020. Attorney Karen O'Casey, as well as Senior Claims Analyst Dave Pharaoh are here to walk us through the ordinance. Welcome, Karen and Dave.
Thank you. This lawsuit arises out of injuries to the plaintiff, Mr. Weisdorf, because of an encounter that he had with Portland Police Bureau officers the night of July 18 of 2020. He was a number of, a large group of protesters that were being moved across Rosa Parks Way after the police department had declared an unlawful assembly. As he was being moved across Rosa Parks Way, he fell and he broke his arm quite seriously. He filed a lawsuit on August 19 of 2020 asserting claims for battery and assault. After we reviewed the police reports and videos that we had of the incident, I, along with the risk management group, determined that it was in the best interest of the city to resolve this case. He had significant treatment to his left arm, including two surgeries that he attributed to his encounters with the police officers that night. We negotiated informally with his attorney, and we agreed upon a settlement of $300,000, which includes attorney's fees and resolution of any liens.
Very good. Colleagues, any questions? Public testimony?
We have three people signed up. First up is Mark Porus.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Go ahead, Mark.
Thanks. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Mark Porus. Say is he/him pronouns. I'm an ordinary Portlander with kids in Portland public schools, and I'm testifying today as a member of the group Portland Cop Watch. We've got no objection to the city paying this $300,000 settlement for bodily injury inflicted upon Mr. Weisdorf by the Portland Police Bureau on July 18, 2020. We understand the parties have come to an agreement, and we hope that Mr. Weisdorf is able to fully recover from the brutality inflicted upon him by city employees. This particular settlement raises the total, according to our records, paid out by the city for protests between 2018 and 2020 to more than $2.7 million. From court records, we understand Mr. Weisdorf was a nonviolent protester against police brutality and racism near the Portland Police Association's old building. And around 11:30 PM, PPP declared a riot and required people to disperse. According to court records, Mr. Weisdorf cleared the area as directed, traveled through residential streets for several blocks when Portland police officers knocked him to the ground. As he attempted to get up, officers again knocked him to the ground, causing him to suffer injuries, including two fractures to his left arm, which required surgery and metal surgical hardware, as well as extensive abrasions, bruising, swelling, and soft tissue damage. Court records also reveal that PPP made no attempt to arrest, restrain, or detain Mr. Weisdorf. Court records do not identify the officers responsible for the brutality, nor do we have any idea whether or not any officers have been disciplined for their heinous behavior. It's notable that this $300,000 settlement is the largest payout to a single person for police brutality at a protest since 2018. Also notable is that the $300,000 does not come out of the officer's pockets, and it does not come out of the Police Bureau budget. These bills are footed by taxpayers who pay into the city's insurance and claims fund. We continue to appear before you on police brutality settlements in an attempt to get you to engage in dialogue about these incidents of police brutality. Two weeks ago, when we testified on a police brutality case, one commissioner took time during their vote to wonder how much money was spent due to damage from the so-called riots in 2020, adding that it is harder to recruit and retain police officers now. Number one, police brutalized Portlanders regardless of whether or not PPP had declared a riot. And number two, the use of police violence against innocent people is not justifiable simply because there's unruly or destructive behavior present. And if it were fully justifiable, the city would not be agreeing to pay out these huge sums of money. And number three, the mayor himself stated during a community member's testimony on the Police Accountability Commission's last quarterly report that Portland has a positive experience in terms of recruiting. We have lots of people interested in working for the Police Bureau, and that we do not have a recruiting problem at present. And finally, there was an article posted on Oregon Live yesterday in which Mr. Weisdorf is quoted as saying, "My experience really made real for me the issues that we were protesting in the first place. The overly quick resort to force we've seen in the Portland Police Bureau, the sworn officers we trust to enforce the law should not have impunity to violate that same law." Thank you.
Thank you. Next individual, please.
Next up, we have Leoni Reyna online.
Welcome.
Hi there. Can you all hear me?
Yep, loud and clear.
Hello, council members. My name is Leoni Reyna. I was a Portland police officer for 25 years. I reviewed the lawsuit, media articles, and video of this case. If I understand correctly, this is a protest where someone set fire to the police union office, and police had to clear the scene. There's a difference between peaceful protest and a riot. Setting buildings on fire and destroying property is criminal conduct and cannot be tolerated. Protesters have a duty to leave the scene when that happens, so the fire department can put out the fire and police can try to identify and arrest offenders. I heard the declarations in the video by the police for protesters to leave. According to media reports, police pushed protesters over I-5 from Fenwick Avenue, which is about five blocks away. It is alleged Mr. Weisdorf was assaulted that far away from the scene. I was trained in crowd control techniques to push with my baton and keep the crowd moving away. I'm struggling to understand why the cops repeatedly pushed Mr. Weisdorf to the ground instead of assisting his forward movement. In the video, the group of cops converged on Mr. Weisdorf looked angry, which means they were behaving vindictively at random. Protesters and city leaders cannot have it both ways. The frustration of the citizens are warranted. Portland city leaders have a race issue and continuously fail to address issues of racial disparity. The public wants to trust its police, but if police are not held accountable for racial misconduct, the public can never trust them. Bad leaders groom bad officers. Police leaders are known to be vindictive, which in turn teaches subordinates to be vindictive. I'm not surprised Portland was a hotbed for civil unrest in 2020, and I don't believe anything will change. City leaders seem to like the status quo. This litigation took three years, and what changes has the city offered to make? None that I'm aware of. The city hired dozens of attorneys to litigate protest-related excessive use of force complaints at the cost of approximately $160,000 a year for each attorney, which means this case cost over $500,000 to litigate. It would be less expensive to write the check than waste taxpayer dollars. Why not pay out the rest of the lawsuits so the city can move forward, lay off the extraneous attorneys, and redirect those funds to training and education of police and the public on how to protest peacefully? Those are my recommendations.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jared Essig.
Good afternoon, morning, Mayor, Commissioners, citizens of Portland, and representatives of Cop Watch and of the police union who testified before me in public comment. Thank you. I never thought I would agree with a police officer on this question, but I almost have nothing more to say. Ms. Leon Reyna has pretty much adequately summed up what the city needs to do. And I'm quoting from the most recent police, the People's Police Report published by Portland Cop Watch September 2023, in the front right column. Speaking about other cases before today's, where the city paid out massive amounts of money, and most of it going to the attorneys and not actually to the plaintiffs. And Ms. Reyna has brought up another point. It's not only going to the plaintiff's attorneys, it's going to city attorneys who are refusing to represent the city, refusing to argue on behalf of the public. This police officer has done a better job than the city's attorneys at representing the city's position. This needs to stop. Stop wasting your money on these attorneys and instead educate police and protesters on how the police peacefully protest. First of all, there is a difference between a protest and a riot. What is that difference? You have a responsibility to the public to teach this. Now, the city refused to do that in their report. There is actually a difference. I support police reform and police accountability, just like Mr. Weisdorf did. I don't think that showing up at riots helps that. Like MLK Jr. said, I know revolutionaries hate it when liberals quote MLK. But he is actually right about this, Mark, and all of you other abolitionists out there, that riots are counter-revolutionary. Riots actually are designed to fail. They're designed to fail, therefore, counter-revolutionary. Therefore, you have succeeded in failing. And therefore, that's why police are funded at record levels all over the state of Oregon. People are pointing at Portland as reasons why to avoid this issue, why to avoid police reform and accountability. So you have successfully failed, transferred massive amounts of wealth from taxpayers to rioters, and funded the police at the same time. That's what's happened. And city leaders prefer the status quo rather than to dealing with these issues. Now, quoting from the Cop Watch, "Even though Portland Cop Watch testified to each one of these, the council made no effort to address the underlying policy issues causing the steady leak from their self-insurance fund, which you know is supported by tax payer money." It doesn't come out of the police budget. It comes from the insurance fund. Now, Cop Watch also has a duty, and all these other agitators and demagogues, like myself, to not commit crime and to not incite crime. They have that public duty as well. And if they're not willing to do that, then we are entitled to heckle them, and I ask for permission to heckle next time he speaks.
Thank you. This is an emergency ordinance. Any further discussion? That completes testimony, correct? Very good. Please call the roll.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Glad the two parties came to an agreement. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. 922.
Approve findings to authorize an exemption to the competitive bidding requirements and authorize use of the alternative contracting method of construction manager, general contractor for the Columbia Boulevard wastewater treatment plant wet weather clarifier and hypochlorite system modifications project for an estimated amount of $63 million.
Commissioner Maps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, this item comes to us from the Bureau of Environmental Services. This ordinance authorizes environmental services to use alternative contracting methods for a complex project at the city's main wastewater treatment plant. As you may recall, colleagues, last month, this council approved a design services contract to replace the clarifiers and the hypochlorite system at the Columbia Boulevard wastewater treatment plant. The ordinance before us today The ordinance before us today is the next step in that project. This ordinance authorizes the city to seek an exemption to competitive bidding requirements for this project and authorizes the use of an alternative contracting method for this work. The Bureau proposes using an alternative contracting method because this project is complex, the stakes are high, and our room for error is small. This project requires BES to rebuild key parts of our wastewater treatment plant without shutting that plant down even for a minute. All construction must take place while operators continue to turn our wastewater into clean water. Using an alternative contracting method for this project will allow BES to partner with the contractor early in the planning process for this project, which will both help keep our employees safe and will help contain costs. The overall cost of this project is estimated to be $125 million, and project construction is expected to begin in the winter of 2026. Here to tell us more about this project, we have Beko Taylor, Chief Procurement Officer from the Office of Management and Finance. We also have Muriel Geza Teufel, a Division Manager at Environmental Services. And finally, we should have Tressy Word, a Project Manager with BES. Welcome, Director Taylor.
I'm going to cede to my colleagues at BES on this matter. If they're online. No colleagues.
Take it away, BES.
We've got it. It's, it's, is it on the screen below me here?
Yes. That should be.
Okay. Did you want to start, Muriel, or?
You go ahead, Tressy. Thanks.
All right. My name is Tressy Word. She/her pronouns. I'm the Project Manager with Environmental Services. Next slide, please. And today I'm going to be providing a project overview, objectives, requirements, budget, and next steps. Next slide. So as Commissioner Maps mentioned, this is about $125 million project located at the Columbia Boulevard wastewater treatment plant. And the focus of this project is to improve aging infrastructure. The wet weather clarifiers are used mainly during the wet season because some of the city's stormwater is piped to the wastewater treatment plant, and their main role is to treat high flows during storm events. And the disinfection system is the final step of the treatment process to clean water before discharging it into the Columbia River. Next slide, please. So the objectives for this project are to reduce risk of failure and to increase system resilience, also to support safe operation and maintenance. The wet weather clarifiers were built in the 50s and 70s, and as they age, they become more challenging to maintain. And the disinfection system is a highly corrosive system, so, and several parts of it are spread throughout the treatment plant. So one of the goals here is, well, we'll talk more about the goals in a second. Next slide, please. So regarding the wet weather clarifier system, the project improves mechanical, structural, electrical, and instrumentation systems. It also includes repairing concrete elements, the aging tanks, and the washdown systems. Next slide. Regarding the hypochlorite system, this project consolidates the system to make it simpler to maintain and contain less corrosive material. It also supports continuously meeting discharge requirements well into the future for safer and simpler operations. Next slide. So regarding this ordinance that we're here today, we are talking about requesting a low bid exemption for the project. This project's design has not begun yet, so the level of confidence is relatively low regarding the construction cost, but we're estimating it to be around $63 million. And the reasons that we are proposing this are because the project is complex. And it's, as Commissioner Maps mentioned, if we need to maintain continuous and safe operations, involving the contractor early in the design process allows their input to constructability, construction sequencing, packaging, dealing with long lead items and things like that, and it reduces a risk to the project in all types of ways. So it also advances goals of equity and inclusion in construction. This project will, is committed to complying with the regional equity workforce agreement and construction diversity and inclusion policies for alternative contracting. Next slide. So in terms of the next steps, the goal is to come back to council with a guaranteed maximum price the summer of 2026, and then start construction in winter or fall of 26. So, next slide.
Thank you. Great report. Colleagues, any questions at this particular juncture? Public testimony?
No one's saying no.
Oh, just a quick one. This is a great project, and I enjoyed the infrastructure tour, which was a while ago now, but I knew this was coming. I mean, the pictures tell the story. Has there been a communication? How will that impact the neighbors on the other side of Columbia Boulevard? Will there be, it looks like such a big project. I just.
I'll just turn that over to staff. I mean, my, I have intuition. I have intuition here, but why don't I turn it over to staff to answer Commissioner Ryan's question, which is?
And I could also get it this week sometime.
Oh, sure. I bet you we can probably answer this question. We do a lot of construction out there. BES, how will this, how will this project impact neighbors?
Yeah, I can answer that. So council members, you might have seen me before. I'm Muriel Geza Teufel. And the big construction that you saw in the pictures is the current project, which is a secondary treatment expansion program. So the neighborhood is already undergoing major construction, about five times bigger than the project we're talking about today. And the approach here is to do community outreach. We did send letters to the neighbors. And then we have noise ordinances that the contractor has to meet. The impact is mainly on truck traffic on Columbia Boulevard, which is pretty heavily trafficked already. And so we have traffic control plans in place for that. So far, it's been going well, and I have been aware of neighborhood complaints related to construction activities.
Thank you, Muriel. Because of the edits that we did on Lombard, more and more traffic is going to Columbia Boulevard. And so that's becoming one of the only expressways, if you will, in North Portland. That's where a lot of our haulers are and where a lot of our industry is. So just will be keeping an eye on that so we can keep the flow of currency going. Thanks.
Yes.
All right, good. No testimony. This is the first reading of the non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please. 923, non-emergency ordinance.
Authorize competitive solicitation and contract with the lowest responsible bidder and provide payment for construction of the Sheridan Trunk Work Zone 3 Project E11008 for an estimated cost of $1,652,000.
Commissioner Maps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, this item comes to us from the Bureau of Environmental Services. This ordinance authorizes Environmental Services to rehabilitate 510 feet of a large pipe that carries sewage and stormwater in South Portland. That section of pipe is aging and is at risk of failure. This large combined pipe is a critical piece of the city's collection system, and it is located in a tricky location underneath I-5, near OHSU's South Waterfront Campus. Replacing this section of pipe will extend the service life of this critical pipe and reduce the risk of pipe leakage and sewer releases, which in turn will protect public health, people's property, and the environment. This project will cost approximately $1.6 million, and we expect construction to begin in May of 2024. Here to tell us more about this ordinance, we have Lisa Huntington, Division, Design Division Manager for BES. We also have Daniel Boatman, a Project Manager with Environmental Services. Lisa, Daniel, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps. My name is Lisa Huntington. For the record, I'm going to pass this over to our engineer and project manager, Daniel Boatman, to tell you more.
Yeah, thank you. So go ahead and go to next slide, please. So as Commissioner Maps mentioned, this is just over 500 feet of pipe. It is a large diameter pipe at 66 inches and has been, it was constructed over 135 years ago, has four service connections. Maps mentioned that it is in a difficult location. You can see I-5 and I-405 crossing just above it there. And then we have the OHSU parking lot at the downstream end of the pipe in question. Next slide, please. We are looking at doing, or we're planning on a trenchless rehabilitation of the pipe in order to reduce the impacts to both the surrounding structures and to commuters. Next slide, please. We've had extensive outreach for the project. Here's some of the different numbers for it. I won't read each bullet, but suffice to say that there's been fairly extensive outreach. We've also been working closely with OHSU in order to reduce impacts to their parking lot and make sure that it remains open during the construction work. We did procure a noise variance for up to 10 nights during the installation of the trenchless liner in order to repair this pipe. The work is planned as daytime activities, but the noise of variance allows us to extend into the evening or even overnight as needed in order to complete the work. Next slide, please. Commissioner Maps noted the engineer's estimate is $1.6 million, six five. We have a medium confidence level, and that mostly had to do with that the technology that was selected doesn't have as many vendors in the area. And so we did additional outreach in order to get several of our local contractors interested in bidding the project. And so we're expecting between three and five bidders on the project. Additionally, the materials for the repair have a long lead time. So all of those made us less confident than normally we shoot for a optimal or high confidence level. We are hoping to advertise the project once this ordinance goes into effect in December and anticipate construction in May. And because of the long lead time for the materials, we've got a year-long construction duration, but the bulk of the work would happen over just a few weeks. Next slide. And that is it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I don't think there's any public testimony on this, but we should probably check.
All right, very good. Any further questions on this? This is the first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you for the presentation. 924, also a non-emergency ordinance.
Authorize competitive solicitation and price agreements for on-call green stormwater infrastructure maintenance and irrigation services for $12 million over five years.
Commissioner Maps.
Mr. Mayor, colleagues, this item comes to us from the Bureau of Environmental Services. This ordinance authorizes Environmental Services to solicit proposals from contractors to provide maintenance and irrigation services for the Bureau's Green Street Planters. The city's Green Street Planters harness the power of nature to collect and manage stormwater and provide many green spaces throughout our city. BES uses on-call contractors to support maintenance of the more than 2,500 green streets and more than 150 natural areas that filter and absorb storm water. The maintenance contracts for these assets have been in place since 2014 and are set to expire at the end of this fiscal year. The ordinance before us today updates those contracts. Here to tell us more about this ordinance, we have Ryan DeRocher, Green Stormwater Infrastructure Operations and Maintenance Manager for Environmental Services. Welcome, Ryan. Take over, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Wheeler.
Morning.
Commissioners, Maps, Rubio, Gonzalez, and Ryan. My name is Ryan DeRocher. I'm an environmental manager in the Bureau of Environmental Services. I'm here today to present about BES's green stormwater infrastructure maintenance and our need for new price agreements.
Next slide, please.
In today's presentation, I'll highlight the functions and benefits of green stormwater infrastructure, or GSI, and the role of GSI in Portland stormwater management. I'll discuss the operations and maintenance necessary to keep this infrastructure functional and in good condition. And I'll summarize our current price agreements for this work and our need for new agreements. Next slide. Let's start with a basic definition. When I talk about green stormwater infrastructure, I'm referring to both green street facilities in the right-of-way and to larger neighborhood or regional-scale vegetated water quality facilities. A green street is a vegetated, sustainable stormwater strategy that meets regulatory compliance and resource protection goals by using a natural systems approach to manage stormwater, reduce flows, improve water quality, and enhance watershed health. In combined sewer basins, flow control helps reduce sewer overflows and basement sewer backups and keeps excessive stormwater volume away from the wastewater treatment plant, which we just heard about from my colleagues at BES. In separated sewer basins, water quality treatment is the primary driver. Green infrastructure removes sediment and filters pollutants before stormwater is discharged to surface water or groundwater. In addition to these stormwater management functions, GSI also provides numerous community benefits, including heat island reduction, neighborhood livability, access to nature in urban areas, traffic calming and pedestrian safety, and many others. These benefits are especially important in historically underserved areas like the outer east side and parts of North Portland with less tree canopy and access to nature. Next slide. The city's inventory of GSI has grown steadily over the past 20 years. BES started building green streets as pilot projects in 2002. In 2007, city council adopted the green streets policy as binding city policy to promote and incorporate use of green streets in public and private development. We currently manage, as Commissioner Map said, approximately 2,500 green streets with 50 to 150 new facilities added each year. There are three new, three streams of new assets being constructed. The BES Capital Improvement Program to address priority areas of stormwater risk, the Public Works Permit Process for private development, and interagency projects with PBOT, TRIMA, and other local agencies. We also manage 148 regional water quality facilities, which are constructed ponds, larger swales, or artificial wetlands located on tax lots. The inventory of this asset type is growing much more slowly, but several new water quality facilities were just constructed as part of the Southwest Capitol Highway project completed earlier this year. Next slide. This map shows a distribution of green streets across just a portion of the city. Green streets are located in every section and are woven into the fabric of practically every neighborhood in Portland. Next slide. So on to green street maintenance. Maintaining this network of distributed assets requires significant effort and labor. Our current budget and staffing levels were able to perform regular maintenance on average three times per year. Maintenance is year-round but seasonal in nature. For example, sediment removal in winter and spring, weeding, trimming, and pruning in summer, and planting in fall and spring. Inlet clearing and trash and debris removal are year-round. And of course, irrigation is only in the dry months of summer. All of these activities I've listed All of these activities I've listed are included in the scope of services in our current price agreements and the proposed new solicitation. Next slide. BES has relied primarily on contracted service vendors to perform the vast majority of GSI maintenance work. This work is implemented under goods and services price agreements, also known as on-call contracts. Our existing price agreements have been in place for almost 10 years and are set to expire at the end of the current fiscal year. We must replace these expiring contracts without delay in order to avoid a gap in service. Next slide. The ordinance before council today is to authorize a solicitation and price agreements for green storm water infrastructure, maintenance, and irrigation services. The total combined value of all price agreements will be 12 million over five years. We're seeking multiple vendors to provide greater flexibility and resilience to our operations. We aim to execute up to 10 price agreements total, at least five each for maintenance and irrigation services, with some vendors providing both services and some only one. We have already engaged with the inclusive contracting team and procurement services. We're very eager to work with them to conduct targeted outreach to ensure broad and diverse pool of proposers, and we aim to make the RFP process as inclusive as possible by identifying and mitigating barriers to participation. Next slide. So with council's authorization via this ordinance, BES will work with procurement services to issue an RFP, conduct targeted outreach, and ultimately execute new price agreements as described. We hope to have the new agreements in place by June to avoid a gap in service. Thank you for allowing me to present this information today. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thanks. Colleagues, any questions at this particular juncture? Do we have public testimony?
No one signed up.
Great. Good presentation. Thank you. This is the first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thanks. Thanks a lot. Thank you. And next item, nine, two, five, which is also a non-emergency ordinance.
Authorize contract with HDR Engineering Incorporated for consulting services to support participation in a federal energy regulatory commission relicensing process for the Portland hydroelectric project in the amount of $2,833,575.
Commissioner Maps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, this item comes to us from the Portland Water Bureau. As you know, the Water Bureau operates a hydroelectric plant at Bull Run. That hydroelectric plant generates enough clean electricity to power 10,000 homes in the Portland metro area. Every 50 years, the city of Portland must apply to the federal government to either renew or return our license to operate that hydroelectric plant. The city of Portland applied for and received its license to operate the Portland Hydroelectric Project in 1979, which means it is now time for the Water Bureau to begin the FERC relicensing process. FERC requires a five-year formal relicensing process. Consulting services are required to complete this filing. Which brings us to the ordinance before us today, which authorizes the Water Bureau to enter into a professional services contract with HDR Engineering, Inc., for consulting services to support the city in participating in and completing the regulatory processes associated with relicensing or with license surrender for the Portland Hydroelectric Project. This project will cost approximately $2.8 million. Services and expenditures under this contract will occur over several fiscal years. Funding for the first-year cost is available in both the Water Bureau's and the Portland Hydro Project's adopted budgets for fiscal year 2324. Here to tell us more about this ordinance, we have Edward Campbell, Deputy Director for the Portland Water Bureau, and we have LeAnn Davis, Environmental Regulatory Manager with the Portland Water Bureau. Edward, LeAnn, welcome. I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Again, Edward Campbell, Deputy Director, Portland Water Bureau. And the Commissioner did a great job of introducing us, so I'll just move along. So if we can get the slides up, thank you. You may recall, I was here in July to seek authorization from the council on our process to initiate the federal hydropower relicensing process. And at that time, I mentioned that we would be coming back seeking professional, technical, expert services to help us with that process, and that's what we're here seeking authorization for today. So next slide. Thanks. So a quick reminder on what the Portland Hydroelectric Project is. Essentially, for the last 41 years, the city's been generating and selling power from two powerhouses located at our Bull Run dams. We have essentially been taking advantage of our drinking water operations to, which require us to move water through the reservoirs and downstream to generate electricity on a year-round basis. The projects have generated $13 million overall in that history of net revenues to the general fund, and they are an important contributor to the region's supply of non-carbon-emitting electricity. Next slide, please. So the relicensing process that lies ahead for us will be conducted according to a formal process and a strict schedule regulated by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And in July, as I mentioned, you authorized us to proceed with developing and submitting our necessary pre-application materials by the February 2024 deadline. We are, as of this week, in the process of finalizing those documents, and we plan to file with FERC by the end of this calendar year. The five-year regulatory process will provide the city with opportunities to hear from all interested parties and to further study and review both the regulatory and financial status of the hydropower operation before the council needs to make a final decision of whether to renew or to surrender. As we covered in July, a surrender decision will be, will require its own FERC-directed process, and we anticipate that we'll be ready for a council decision in fiscal year 2027, 28. So with that, I'll turn it over to LeAnn Davis to walk us through the provisions of the contract.
Okay, thank you. Next slide, please. So the ordinance is to approve the contract. As you know, that, as we've said, hydropower relicensing is a very infrequent process for the city. We do not currently have the staff capacity or the expertise to undergo this process alone. This contract will provide the consulting services necessary to complete the federally mandated process steps on time and with the appropriate documentation. So this ordinance will authorize the professional services contract with HDR Engineering. Next slide, please. The contract will include an array of professional services, not including but not limited to project management, so including meeting and site visit scheduling, project scheduling, and the legal record maintenance. Services for outreach and communication tools, support for city staff engaging in informal and formal consultation with tribal nations and state and federal regulatory agencies, managing and implementing all of the required studies as well as completing the reports associated with those studies. There'll be several relicensing documents required as part of this process, so we support to develop the draft and final documents. And finally, also technical support for the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, Environmental Review and Public Process that's also involved. It's also important to note that this contract allows for similar services if the council were to decide to go with a decision to surrender the license. Next slide, please. So the total amount of the contract is just over $2.8 million for five years. These funds are available in the Water Bureau as well as the Bureau of Hydroelectric Power's current year budgets. Additional funding authorizations would be requested in the FY24 through the FY28, '29 budget cycles. And the initial cost of this service agreement is expected to be, will be a 50/50 split between the Water Bureau and Bureau of Hydroelectric Power pending the cost service analysis that was discussed in the prior resolution. Next slide, please. The current contract includes about 680, almost $685,000 or nearly 24% of the contract for businesses that have been certified by the State of Oregon Business for inclusion and diversity, for disadvantaged minority women, emerging or service-disabled veteran-owned businesses. Next slide, please. And so this is just an overview of the timeline. We're currently in the pre-relicensing phase. Once we file a formal documentation expected by the end of this year, we will initiate the formal relicensing process, which will take about five years. We would be conducting annual reports to the council during, throughout this process. The next major deadline anticipated in February 2027, where we would have to file our final license application. We anticipate coming to council for a final decision with license and the known terms and conditions of that license in 2028. And if all goes as planned, a new license in 2029. Next slide, please. And this is a public website that we have developed for more information on the project for anyone that has interest or questions about it.
Great. Colleagues, any questions? Looks like you've covered all the bases. Do we have public testimony?
No one signed up.
All right. This is the first reading. It moves to second reading. Thanks.
Good job. Thank you.
I believe that completes our business for this morning. We're adjourned until 2:00 PM.